...in honoring America, saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Again, welcome and good evening. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lariva.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mia Millenazzo.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Seven present.
Again, thank you. The first order of business under the special order of business, we have two spotlight on excellence. I would like to entertain a motion that we move those to the end of the agenda, another part of the agenda by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor of moving those, in light of the fact that our guests are not yet here, we certainly hope that they will arrive, and if would they do, with the permission of my colleagues, we'll take it up at that time. So, all those in favor of moving that to another part of the agenda, signify by saying aye. Pose the vote. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of September 1st, 2010. Motion to approve by Ms. Lariva, second by Ms. Martin.
Page 8.
Yes. On September 1st minutes? Okay.
On page 8.
Page 8. It should say what? I'm sorry.
Altered.
Altered?
R-O-S-D-E-R.
Oh. Ten or seven?
Page 10.
Ten.
A halfway down basis, B-A-S-I-S. The key flag is there is three, a dozen, and a spare. That was the basis.
Okay.
Page 11.
Yeah.
The total in terms of benefits to support these five positions is total fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
What did I have? I'm sorry.
Eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty.
And what is this supposed to be?
Five, uh, fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty. I think that goes back to the vision we had on that day about the amount.
Okay. I will correct them. So, as amended?
Okay, motion as amended to approve the minutes of September 1st, second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pose the vote. Thank you. Continuing on with the agenda, under minutes, the regular school committee meeting of September 15th, 2010. The chair recognizes Ms. Lariva.
Yes, Your Honor. Given the length of the packet, I would ask that we defer acting on this until the next meeting.
Motion by Ms. Larva to defer action on the minutes of the September 15th meeting, your second, second by Ms. Doherty. Anybody have a comment, question? Mr. Leahy.
Sure, I'm sorry. I just, what, why, could I clarify? Why would we? All we're doing is approving them?
There are some issues, questions that I have on some of the, so I'd like some more time to review it.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to defer acceptance of the minutes of the September 15th meeting. A motion's been made, and second, all those in favor of deferring the minutes until next meeting, signify by saying aye. Pose the vote. Thank you. Next item, under permission to enter, the chair recognizes Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Elizabeth sent again for the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to provide professional development training for District K-12 Art and Music Teachers, development of the Lowell Public Schools Bon Arts Pathway Program, oversee grades five through twelve instrumental music program, and build partnerships with Middlesex Community College and UMass Lowell, funding provided by the School Department budget for local professional development. C. Lynn Chambers for the amount of five thousand dollars to provide staff training, which will directly benefit teachers by improving their capacity to utilize specific assistive technology instruments for special education students, funding provided by the Special Education 240 Grant. Dorothy Azanhar-MED for eight thousand dollars to provide consultation and training to special education teachers, working with students with cochlear implants to observe these students as needed to make recommendations related to their individual education plans. Funding provided through the Special Education 240 Grant and North Shore Education Consortium for the amount of one hundred and, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars to provide for otto district tuition costs for three students enrolled and receiving services, as outlined in the Special Education IEP, funding provided by the School Department budget Special Education Tuition Account. That's all, Your Honor.
Any questions on the items under permission to enter? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Ms. Lariva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Under memorials, committee as a whole, we have two this evening. The first, Roy Stewart, father of Katie Frichette, speech therapist at the Morrie School, uncle of Patty Myers, daily school teacher, and Ann Murphy, Assistant Superintendent, and John F. Casey, retired Lowell High School teacher. Could you please rise in a moment of silence and dock in chambers?
Thank you, hon.
Thank you. May they rest in peace. Under unfinished business, media, technology, support liaison, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. An update on this particular position, the last position that was voted by the school committee was taken to the LSA for a vote, and last week it was turned down by the membership of the LSAA, so we're bringing it forward to you tonight to look at the position again. And we were making sense, the position was rejected by the LSAA, we're making three recommendations for that particular position. One, that we, we removed the certification requirements that were presently attached to that position, so it will give us more flexibility, to amend the terms of the employment to two hundred days, to a full-time, year-round position with four weeks vacation, as is the case with other non-affiliated technology positions within the School Department, and amend the salary schedule as previously proposed to a range of fifty-five to sixty-five thousand annually. We're still suggesting that it would be three positions that would be required for the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the fringe benefit costs, the three, thirty, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty, for a total of two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The job description is attached.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Chair recognizes Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. Through to the superintendent, in light of, that the position was turned down by the LSAA, and that it's going to return as a non-affiliated position, I would like to make a motion that we adjust some of the terms of the agreement. So, basically, what my motion asks for is that we reconsider the vacation time and go to a more, I guess, industry standard, so we go from four weeks to two weeks, and provide, let's see, provide two weeks vacation from the start, and then the employees, according to other language in our rather contracts, that they would be allowed over time to build up their vacation. The second point I wanted to make was on sick leave. I'd like to ask that we reduce the initial annual sick leave allocation, the standard fifteen days, down to twelve days, because this is just a trend that we'd like to head in, I believe. And the third would be the sick leave buyback terms. We've been, this has been a topic of discussion the last year or so. I'd like to ask that we keep the minimum fifteen years requirement, that you would then collect one-third of your unused sick, sick leave time, but that it be capped off what the city side actually does. And I did have in my notes twenty thousand, but I did want to ask for a correction. I, I thought I saw something in the city side that might have been a little higher, I'm not sure, but, okay, it is, okay. I read something tonight, I must have been wrong then. So, I'd like to propose that that get capped off at a maximum twenty thousand dollars. So, I'd like to put that motion forward for discussion.
Your second, second by Mr. Leary. Ms. Lariva.
Through you to Superintendent Moore, Assistant Superintendent Lang, do we currently have other employees in the same position, that would then have better benefits?
Is your mic on, Ms. Larva? Is your mic on? Is your microphone on?
Sorry. Through you to the Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent Lang, do we currently have other employees in the same position that would then have better benefits?
Madam Superintendent.
I'll just answer, and then, Mr. Lang, if you want to fill it out any more, technically, we don't have these three positions. They don't exist presently. So, we do have other people who do technology work, but these positions are new to us.
Yeah, no, I was gonna, as the superintendent indicated, these are three positions that are brand-new, so there's no one fulfilling this particular job classification or this particular function. The other technology folks in the district are other similar non-affiliated positions do have the four weeks of vacation time, fifteen sick days, and the sick leave is, is currently in place.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Just a couple, couple of quick questions on the proposal as it stands here. So, we're, by removing basically the, the teaching and instructional requirements, are we returning to the, it seems like we're returning to the initially proposed position? So, with a focus on, on maintenance, on, you know, software, on truly that technology-type Could someone refresh my memory? When this was first proposed, weren't we talking about three positions at fifty thousand dollars each? Is that correct?
Assistant Superintendent Lang.
I can, if you don't mind. The first position was strictly a computer repair technician position. It was three, and it was either fifty thousand or fifty-five, it was one or the other. Then, the, the media technology support liaison that we recommended at the last meeting had a salary grid that conformed with the rest of the LSAA positions. What we've actually done is kept that proposed job description as far as the enhanced responsibilities and duties of the actual position, so the job description is the same, pretty much, as last time we looked at it, except this time it would not be part of the union, and while we would still look for individuals that may have that certification, we are now, it is going to have a longer work year than our traditional school year, we're going to have to expand our field of, of possible candidates. And I'm just hesitant that if we look outside of the realm of actual school systems now, if people see that kind of a school certification on the posting, they may be hesitant to apply. So, I'd rather take the, the requirement off the job description, even though it was preferred, just to not have it be, be an issue for anyone who may be considering the position. If someone certainly had that certification, it's going to benefit us, and that was my rationale for the range going from the fifty-five to sixty-five, so that if they did have the, the highest certifications or whatnot, you could go towards the high end of the, the spectrum. I think the first time out, I honestly forget the range, but it was the fifty to fifty-five. This would just allow us a little bit higher range in the event that we did get people that, that had that qualification.
My only request or recommendation, and obviously, as we go through a lot of these different areas, we can discuss it, but having made the change, and in my mind, really, it is, I recognize that we're taking that out as a, as a requirement, the certifications. It does change the position fundamentally, if it's not a requirement to have that educational certification, and I would be more comfortable if this was in a, I mean, it's not a huge difference, but a fifty to sixty thousand dollar range that is in line with a true technology-type position, because I do think that, we can all recognize it would be great to have someone who had an educational background. The reality is, I, I don't necessarily think that that's going to happen, and I think the position that we're hiring for now, we have specifically taken that out. So, in, in my mind, the fifty to sixty thousand dollar range is more in line with what we would pay for a traditional technical position. So, that would just be my.
Thank you. Mr. Leary.
I guess this is when we initially did, or Mr. Leahy and I had requested and made a motion together to do a hybrid position, this is totally not what we wanted. I mean, this is just completely end of the spectrum, and last meeting, you know, I thought was a pretty decent compromise. We had the function of technology as well as student involvement in utilizing people who had those expertise and skill sets. I realized the union made a decision not to, they didn't want three new positions in the Unit B, and just to clarify, this isn't the teachers' union. This is Unit B, which is the administrators' union. Okay, so, if anyone wants to blame Paul Georges for rejecting it, he didn't have anything to do with this. I'm, you know, we need technology people, so I guess I have to vote for it, but it's really frustrating. We needed folks who had skill sets that could interact with teachers to help do better skills. This is incredibly disappointing. Mr. Leahy articulates industry standard, which is a hundred percent correct. Most people start off with two weeks vacation. Sometimes you get three weeks vacation if you negotiate that as an individual. Not very many people that I'm aware of get four weeks vacation. So, I agree with Mr. Leahy's steps. The salary range, fifty to sixty, you know, it's a tough market, so that can easily move, I can support that. But again, I'm going to support it, but, because we need technical folks to help repair a lot of our equipment, but this is really a major disappointment. Totally something, when I initially, and Mr. Leahy initially put this together as a hybrid and thought it through, we thought it was going to be a cool position that would evolve, help teachers to work with their kids, and maybe even evolve back into something that was even better than the technical position. So, this is like, just totally like, I can't even put an adjective to it, it's just so frustrating, and so pennywise, pound foolish. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the substitute motion? Mr. Conway.
Yeah, just very quickly. It's a bit different than I thought it was going to be, because, again, when I heard about the hybrid job, it sounded, it sounded interesting. It wasn't exactly what I was looking for. I think I was looking for a bit of a separation between the two, so that we could concentrate on one and then concentrate on the other one. However, because of the economic situation that we're presented with, I think it was a decent compromise. And then, when I take a look at the job description, I just don't, I just don't understand that, because, again, it, it's not what I thought, I, and I think the, the committee made it clear what they were looking for. I didn't see it there, and I'm not going to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think one of the reasons, of course, I don't know, I wasn't in the room, but I think one of the reasons the administrators' union didn't support having these three new positions being added in was because of the extended work year, and that would have perhaps seen as setting some precedent. In respect for my colleague to the left, I can see very well what he's trying to do by creating a non-affiliated position that is more in line with industry standards, is to send a message that this is the way we need to go, that we've got benefits that are too rich to support the system. And I applaud that effort. I think it, it makes a lot of sense in, in difficult times, and we need to really be focused on the services we're providing to students. That really has to be a priority. My concern is, as my colleague on the left mentioned, we don't have this particular position in, in the system right now, but we do have non-affiliated positions, that in the past, our practice has been to mirror the benefits that our unionized employees have. So, there's a certain dilemma here, and if we throw out this bold salvo that, okay, you didn't want them in the union, so they're going to be non-affiliated. It is a tough job market. I agree with Ms. Martin that we should be looking at a lower range, go fifty to sixty-five, because if we don't get those higher-end skills that we were looking for, we should be paying the lower amount. So, I, I would want you to amend your motion to include that. But I think at some point, you got to put a line in the sand. You got to say, you know what? We're thinking about students first, and, you know, these are good, these are fair benefits. The, the changes that my colleague talks about, they do meet industry standards, there is an opportunity to increase vacation time with the years of service. I think the sick leave, having twelve days, is still very generous compared to most businesses. I think you get five, and if you take all five of them, it impacts your performance evaluation. I mean, I, I think that this is the way we need to go. So, I am going to support this motion, and I would ask my colleague if he would be open to a friendly amendment to change the, the range to be fifty thousand to sixty-five thousand. That still gives the School Department the, the flexibility to hire, to pay at a, at a higher salary, somebody that has those qualifications, and that would be my only request.
Could you give me that range again? I think, I'm not sure.
I have fifty to sixty.
Fifty to sixty. No, right, so, are you okay?
Fifty to sixty.
Fifty to sixty.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is Mr. Leahy, are you okay with that? Okay. Any further, Ms. Larva.
Might as well join the, the conversation. I understand what committee member Leahy is trying to accomplish here, and I do agree with him in most parts of it. I'm uncomfortable with the way this sick leave portion is written. I could support doing the vacation part, and just reducing the, the four weeks to two weeks with the ability to, to add after time served. I have concerns about decreasing the salary range, only because we're looking for really highly qualified candidates, and even though it is a bad job market, you know, the, the norm for, for these kind of positions is that these people jump around, and they jump at the better deal. So, I'm not sure that this is going to present a better deal for somebody to jump from one IT position to this IT position, and I think at this point, our needs are such that we really need to, to put our best foot forward in that, that respect. So, I, you know, just to throw more changes, that, you know, if we could put the vacation part in here, following the, the superintendent's memo here, you know, amend the terms of employment from two hundred days to a full year round, with four weeks of vac, with two weeks of vacation, three weeks after five years, and four weeks after ten years. But quite frankly, IT people normally do not stay for that length of time in any one position. And keeping the salary range from the fifty thousand to sixty-five thousand.
Fifty?
Well, she, I'm trying to compromise here. Connie wanted the fifty, so, if you, if they find somebody that's worth fifty thousand dollars, then they have the fifty thousand, but if they find somebody that's worth sixty-five thousand, they do the sixty-five thousand. That's, I'm trying to compromise here.
Would you want to put something on the floor, in the form of a substitute? Again, right now, we're at fifty to sixty. Ms. Doherty.
Before we even move to the substitute, if I understand correctly, you're not in favor of capping the sick leave buyback, because sick leave buyback is breaking us. It's breaking us. I want to clarify what the sick leave buyback portion is. Thank you.
Ms. Larva.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I, I, I'm not against sick leave caps. My concern with the way this is written right now, I'm not comfortable with the, with the scenario set out here. I certainly am in favor of, of a cap on sick leave buyback, but I think we need to, in that respect, mirror what we're doing with the, what we're proposing to do with unions. And I, I don't think, you know, I don't think that we're, we've got language here for this.
Well, again, we have a motion on the floor. We do have a, we do have a second by Mr. Leary. And again, that's going back to Mr. Leahy's original motion, but amending the salary range to go from fifty-five to sixty-five down to fifty to sixty. That's where we are right now.
That's what's on the floor now.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. That's what we're voting on, right?
Correct. Any further discussion? Roll call.
This is on Mrs. Larva's side.
No, no. Ms. Larva does not have a motion on the floor. Mr. Leahy and Mr. Leary.
Okay, all right. Ms. Larva.
My apologies. Could we clarify what I'm voting on, please?
You're voting on Mr. Leahy's motion to bring forward the changes to the jobs description, or the benefits thereto, and the salary range would be fifty to sixty. So, the language relative to vacation, sick leave and sick leave buyback, that's in the motion, as amended.
No. Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
No.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays, passes. Motion as amended, passes.
Any public participation this evening? Moving on to the motion part of the agenda, the first motion by Mr. Conway. Oh, yes. Point of person, Ms. Larva. State your point, please.
I just want to have a chance to talk about the number of motions as a whole. Is that all right?
Sure.
Thank you very much. In looking at our agenda here and the number of motions, we have quite a few here that are very detailed and asking for quite a bit of data, and my concern is with the cuts that we've had in the schools, the cuts we've had in central administration, and the fact that we're up against deadlines for Race to the Top funds and deadlines for the turnaround of the Merklin School, I would ask that we either hold off on, on acting on these motions, or if we not do them at this, just not do them at this time. I think we need to focus on the, on the information that we've already requested, and we need to give the central administration time to address those Race to the Top deadlines, the restructuring deadlines, and some of the other funding issues that we have that are front and center. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Could I ask, has there been a request made from the administration that the workload is too heavy at this point? Has that been expressed to one committee member and not the rest of us?
Not that, again, I don't want to get into a debate, but not that.
I'm just curious.
Correct, right. Ms. Larva.
This is just my looking at these motions, and, and some of them, you know, if we go forward, I will speak against, some of them, I think, could have been combined, and, and some of them, I realize are just updates on information that we've already had, but in looking back at some of the information that we've had, requested, I would like to see some of that information have a chance to come forward before we, we keep diving in and asking for more, more data. I mean, committee member Conway has said more than once that sometimes the amount of work and energy that goes in to requesting data then becomes, what exactly are we asking for this information, and what are we going to do with this information? So, this is my take on looking at this. I have not had any kind of expression about workload. I'm just, as a new set of eyes, I'm just looking at it and trying to figure out how we make all this work, and I am uncomfortable at, you know, looking for more information without having addressed the information that we've already got going. And I don't, personally, don't see anything here that's so pressing that we need to act on it right now. But again, that's my opinion.
And I, as a, one of six opinions that, that drive this process, I, I think that's great. I would say if, you know, I personally don't have any motions on the, the agenda this evening, kind of wish I did, but I, I think that if one member feels that motions are inappropriate, it's within their, their purview to, to speak during that time. I, for one, I, I recognize the pressures that the administration is under to get us this information, and when Mr. Conway has made this motion, I've said the exact same thing, that there is no one sitting at, at these seats who can make these decisions without information. And it is not, I have never felt it was my place to try and superimpose my opinion of what's important over anybody else's. So, you know, as colleagues are making motions, I think they need to be judged by this, by this body, as to whether we all feel it's appropriate or not. The process for that is our voting process, and I would, in, as we kind of move forward this evening with, with nine motions, I would just, I think perhaps our best course of action is to try and be as succinct as possible, and give each one of these motions the respect and time that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing on then with the motions, the first one is by Mr. Conway. The motion, "In light of the superintendent's projected shortfall of nine point five million dollars for the 2011, 2012 school year, it is requested that the superintendent prepare and submit to the school committee no later than the first meeting in December, a comprehensive budget plan that will reflect the anticipated loss of revenue. The plan should include but not be limited to the following: anticipated staff reductions, program consolidations, and the areas of reduction and or elimination of programs." Second? Second by Mr. Leahy. Second by Mr. Leahy. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I try not to put too many motions on and not ask for a tremendous amount of information. And I suppose tonight I did. And apparently, we have some, I guess we have some issues with it anyways. On this particular motion, in light of the fact that a number of weeks ago, superintendent came forward and said that, gave us some numbers of $9.5 million for next year. And this is absolutely devastating. We've talked about this, and I know Ms. Martin has mentioned it numerous times, it's year after year after year, sitting here in these seats. I have been only here three years, but other people have been here a lot longer. And they're faced with continuous cuts and reduction in staff and also programs. And it's very, very difficult to see a system that is dismantled over a period of years. And when I take a look at the devastation, the numbers of 9.5 million, this is absolutely incredible, what we're going to be faced with. You know, we were faced with, you know, 4.5 million, which was bad enough, and 3-point something, and 5-point whatever. The bottom line here is when we're looking at 9.5 million, this is something that, I'm not sure what this system looks like with 9.5. And that's why I put this on, because I think that there are going to be very difficult choices that have to be made. And needless to say, the, this 9.5, there has to be a lot of planning put into it. And I'm sure that there is right now. I'm sure that the superintendent and her staff is sitting down, trying to figure out, how are we going to shave monies here and how are we going to shave monies there in order to meet the demands of 9.5 million? And that's why, when I put this motion on, I think it's important, because we're going to have to digest this, this information. We need as much information as possible as far as what is going to be cut, what might be changed or eliminated. And that's why I put, that's why I put the first meeting of December. Somebody mentioned to me the other day that perhaps, you know, the first meeting of January might be, might be perhaps more appropriate. And if that's, if that's the will of the, of the school committee, I certainly will, I'd be willing to amend that and accept the first meeting of January. But again, I'm just simply saying that we need to have this information in front of us as soon as possible so that we can make logical decisions and decisions that's going to hopefully affect our students in a positive way. And again, with all these cuts, it's, it's going to be, it really is going to be devastating. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Leahy, then Ms. Laraba.
Thank you. I just briefly on the motion, that I think the budget's just a work in progress. And I think that, you know, the sooner the better that we get working on it. You know, we can discuss the, I forget the words here, but the detail of the plan. Of course, we want as much information as possible. But after what we went through the last couple of years and what we, what looks to be the situation for next year, I mean, there's so many more problems that we never anticipated. I mean, we've got people who are, we're losing money in Title I. You know, parents are coming up to me saying, well, there's not enough kids on a free and reduced lunch, but we don't qualify for reading teachers. I mean, it's kind of, you're getting discriminated in a reverse discrimination in some cases. And, you know, we have so many people getting bumped around. They're all qualified, but they may not have been in certain grade for a number of years. That obviously affects their, their, their performance in the classroom. And with the MCAS now, a lot of talk about the results. So, I think it's good to get going on this and talk about this as soon as we can. It's just, it's a work in progress. And as I said, there's just so many things that we didn't anticipate with these cuts that are coming to light now, and we need to discuss them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. I'll just say upfront, I can't support this motion at this point. I think a couple of things. The process that we used for budgeting last year, by all accounts, was one that everybody was comfortable with, thought worked very well. There was a lot of planning that went into that. There was a logical progression that went through from one section to another section. And I was looking forward to utilizing that same scenario for this coming year. I think if we start doing a broad scenario of cuts and reductions, we're going to panic people and take them off task of dealing with the Merklin turnaround and dealing with what we need to do for our Race to the Top funds and dealing with our MCAS scores and bringing our numbers up for our students in terms of reading and mathematics. And I would just like to remind my fellow committee members that at the September 15th meeting, I did put a motion in and everyone here approved it, that we just get a better breakdown of the anticipated shortfalls. That wasn't asking them to say, how are you going to address that? That was asking them to say, okay, what are these shortfalls made up with? To give us a sort of, a preview of what we're looking at. But as it stands right now, I think December is too early. And I think trying to do it in all in one shot is not, not the best way to go for us. I would like to see us follow the same scenario as last year, give our people time to get through the start of the year and do the same kind of methodical work that they did last year in terms of setting out the budget hearings, setting out which topics we're going to talk about first, and use that same setup. And use the information from the motion that has already been approved to get that information about our anticipated shortfalls. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry?
Thank you. I don't see the motion as a problem to what we already have in place. We're going to have all these wonderful finance subcommittee meetings like we did last year, going over specific topics. I think this is just another tool for folks out in the, the audience that can understand that we are, yet again, faced with the same challenges. I know it's a broken record and it's, people are like, okay, sure. And as Mr. Leahy just articulated, a lot of the votes we have have significant consequences. I think we are all aware of that. I think unfortunately, those consequences are living human beings in a lot of cases. And, well, they're always a living human being. Usually, it's a student, if not a human being, that we know that's affected directly because of it. So, I'll support the motion. I'm not, you know, December, January, February, we need to make plans for certain areas that are going to, that are going to occur. And a lot of that needs to get that feedback out to our personnel as quickly as possible. Also, to the public at large, because some of the changes that we may be voting on or will be voting on, will have a direct impact. We're also going to be meeting with the city council more often in terms of dialogue, public dialogue. We met once last year. We had a meeting scheduled in September. We needed to postpone that. That'll be scheduled probably in November. So, this is ongoing. This motion doesn't, it's not in conflict, because a lot of this stuff needs to be provided and discussed and shared with the city council, because ultimately, they are going to be a part of what we do and how we do it next year. That's just, that's just a fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have to say, I feel like I'm somewhat in déjà vu, only in the Twilight Zone version, because I had a very similar kind of motion at the beginning of, about the beginning of last year. And my colleague to the right argued and did not support it because it would have a scare factor for employees. So, I find myself in this interesting position where I agree with my colleague on the left that I really liked the way the budget planning happened this last year, as difficult as it was to cut $8 million. Oh, we ended up cutting $4 million, it was the year before. That those, having those regular meetings, those public meetings with very specific areas that we were looking at. I agree with Mr. Larry that we can do both of those. I think that the initial overview, which would incorporate the information that Ms. Laraba asked for in our last meeting, starting with that first, what are the projected shortfalls? And then getting this kind of overview that talks about what are some ways we're looking to find some of these savings, that then rolls out into more detailed meetings as the administration is able to fine tune those details, I think would be the best of both worlds. And so, I am going to support the motion. I would throw it back to my colleague. He said he'd be willing to perhaps amend the timeframe. I do think the first meeting in December is exceptionally soon. I'd be more comfortable with something said, you know, early in the new year or in January, if you, something that, you know, gets us through the holidays at least. And we are, we'll know more information then, but we, as the administration and my colleagues know, we don't really know all the details right till the end in terms of what the state's going to give us. We're not going to know that till the spring. So, it's all kind of just projecting and planning. But I agree, we do need to do that planning. That was why I initially brought a similar motion last year. And I think it did work out for our best interest. We were able to think more carefully about some really deep cuts that we had to make. So, I would like to make an amendment or friendly amendment that says, no later, first meeting in January. That's most appealing to the maker of the motion, but that would be my suggestion.
Motion by Ms. Doherty to amend the motion to read first meeting in January.
Second.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Leahy. Okay. Any other discussion? I'm going to ask Mr. Larry to come, I'd like to just speak on the motion.
Mayor Melonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'm in charge now, mayor, so be quick.
There's been a coup.
You look good in that chair too, Mr. Melonazo.
That's right, thank you.
Chair recognizes the mayor of the city of all, Jim Melonazo.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Let me begin by saying that I'm not questioning the intent of the, of the maker of the motion. I think that when we sat here a couple of weeks ago and heard the $9.5 million, I think it really took us, well, it took me a little bit off guard. But I do want to say that I planned to vote, I had planned to vote against the motion based upon the date of the first meeting in December. But with the friendly amendment being the first meeting in January, I was actually thinking that, you know, I'd rather look at February, because I think last year, we started in February. And I have to tell you, as a new member of the school committee, I was very impressed with the whole process that we had gone through, beginning in February and having the finance subcommittee meeting. We were certainly given a large task to, again, look at the budget, cut $4 million, almost $5 million out of the budget. This committee's done a very good job over the last three fiscal years with what they've had to face in cutting close to $12 to $15 million out of the school department budget. And obviously, it meant programs, it meant jobs and so forth. So, again, if we're looking at a $9.5 million shortfall this year, I'm okay with beginning in January. I was not going to support the motion if it started in January, picking up on what Ms. Laraba said. I think it would have been, first of all, a lot of work in a short period of time. We're already in October and that we're just starting the school year. And it would have been, in my opinion, if we started to talk about programs and positions, it would have been disruptive. It would have really put the administration in a position that they may have taken their, their focus off some very important projects that they have in front of them, in front of us now. So, again, I can support the motion as amended to go forward and begin in the first meeting in January. And again, I'm not questioning the intent of the motion whatsoever, because I was impressed, as I mentioned, last fiscal year, with the work that this committee did in coming up with the FY11 budget and starting in February. January, February, probably, again, being just, you know, a month away from what probably would have been. But me being a person of compromise, I can certainly be comfortable with the January start. So, I'll support the motion.
Mr. Conway? And then Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You look good up there too.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Conway.
I want to say that this particular number of $9.5 million, and I think the mayor is right, I think it took us by surprise. That, that number, by the way, it didn't just take us by surprise, it took the system by surprise. It took the community by surprise when they heard that number. Last year, were there people concerned? Did people make telephone calls and say, what's going on? Of course. But this year, it's different. The atmosphere is different. When they heard 9.5, there were a lot of people that were very concerned about their job. They were concerned about their department. And that's, again, that's why it's, I think it's different this year than it has been last year because, or the year before, because of the numbers. And I certainly hope that somehow, this does not materialize to $9.5 million. And I hope that somehow, that number will shrink by, you know, who knows? And that's, and that's why I saw a, an urgency, because I heard it from a lot of people, said, what are we going to do? Because I know last year, there were people concerned about, are they going to lose their job? Should they apply for another job someplace else? And I think there were a few people that got caught shot. And I certainly don't want to have that, that happen. I think we have to be upfront, we have to be realistic, and I think we have to plan. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
I appreciate the motion. I do have some concerns just with regards to, in particular, the last line, the plan should include but not be limited to the following: anticipated staff reduction, program consolidation, the areas of reductions or eliminations of the program. To the extent that we make those type of recommendations, in the past, we've always worked with people in the schools, and we've brought people together, principals, coordinators of programs, and had those conversations. And last year, the process we had in place did work well for staff, that we did that over the winter months. And as we consolidated the information by department, curriculum, student support services, we brought that information forward. I just want to meet the expectations of the committee. So, I just want to be really upfront on what limitations or what capacity issues we face, because I do want the proposals to be thoughtful that we bring forward to you. And so, that's one issue, just with regards to bringing people together now to do a budget cycle in the middle of our academic year, just the timing of that and the impact that'll have on student achievement. And I share your concern, Mr. Conway, with regards to when people are, and I know the $9.5 million is a big number for us, and we've been saying FY12 was going to be our most difficult year from the beginning of this. And we do know that over $6 million in our budget right now is stimulus money, so that's coming out. And so, if that, that is the big number. If that wasn't in play, it would be another regular $3.5 million deficit, which is huge when, my understanding is, we'll be fortunate to receive level funding. So, that's where that number comes from. So, I just would also like the committee to weigh out the pros and cons against, if we bring forward, as the committee wishes, programs that will be cut in January, people who will be cut are recommendations in January, I'm thinking that that will be disruptive, because as everybody can appreciate, that's really devastating for people. So, to the extent that in the past, historically, those type of big cuts have been made in May, and you've had, you know, less of a school year for people to have to quote unquote get through, so that would just have less impact on our students. So, there's pros and cons to whatever timeline you pick. If it was okay with the Assistant Vice Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Lang if he has any concerns, just so that we.
Sure. Mr. Lang?
Of the expectations?
As I read the motion, the primary concern for me is with the December date. Obviously, that's coming up very, very quickly. That's a, that's a concern. But the process, you know, being part of the process and then as the process evolved last year, it was very helpful, both by myself and the central office staff, to get feedback from the committee in every other week, when we met before the meetings around, say, elementary program or middle school program. And that really helped us to, we can finalize the final, the whole budget that went to the committee. As I read the motion, my interpretation is that the committee would actually be presented with the budget, with the superintendent's recommendations, forego the budget hearings that took place over the course of the spring. And I think that would be troublesome to the, to the committee. I like the idea of the process from last year. I am not opposed to starting that in January, but I just want the expectations to be, to be set. But I do think the every other week meetings around a particular topic area to get feedback to then ultimately roll up into the document in April and May is much more, both appropriate and timely, just given when we receive revenue estimates from the city, when we receive them from the state. We could put a time, a plan together for that first meeting in January that would lay out the whole budget process. That would certainly be fine. But as I read the motion, it was really to have the superintendent present her budget in January and not have that input, which I think was so valuable last spring. So, I would just like some clarification on that.
Okay. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you.
deal with this in January, we are asking the superintendent to present her entire budget by this motion. More importantly, for the people that would be affected by this, you know, people are human. They hear that their job is going to be eliminated, they're going to be searching for a new job. I don't blame them for that. But that means they're in job-search mode, they're not able to give their 100% to us while they finish out this school year. They're going to be in panic mode, making sure that in this economy, they have another job to go to. And that is my biggest concern. I think the way we did it last year with starting with February and going through section by section allowed us to roll that out in a nice... in a more thoughtful way, and I don't think it eased the burden for people or the pain, but I think it allowed people to just kind of see where things were going and try to work together to come up with some scenarios. There were several times that the superintendent and her staff presented a scenario, and we as a group discussed it and said, "Why don't we try this way or try this way?" And I can go back to the infamous Plan A, B, C, C1, C2. You know, that was all part of that conversation, but I think this would be boxing the superintendent and her staff in by saying, "Come up with your anticipated staff reductions, program consolidations, and areas of reduction or elimination of programs in January in one fell swoop." And, again, as a group, we've all said repeatedly that we liked that process last year. I think we would be better served to follow that process again. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy, then Ms. Martin, then Mr. Conway.
I'm all set this time.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I think perhaps because I had had an opportunity to talk with the maker of the motion, and I hope understand the thought process behind this. I mean, and I do think, as I read it, too, I mean, I think asking for a comprehensive budget plan is different than asking for a completed budget. My sense is that, frighteningly, we all agree on what we want right now, that we just don't realize it yet, that we're looking at a January timeframe for the superintendent and her staff to be able to lay out a plan for us, how we're going to be going through, what is going to be an extremely challenging budget process. It would include... because I agree that the biweekly meetings of the finance subcommittee, I thought, were expertly run, and I thought we got a great deal of information that I found particularly helpful. My sense is that that would be part of the plan, that this would just allow the committee to get an initial kind of idea of what the landscape is going to look like and how the superintendent is planning on kind of going through what we know is going to be a very difficult process, so that we can all get this information upfront. I think the January timeframe is a great move, and I think it allows us to kind of get the, again, get the master plan in front of us, so that we begin in February with the finance subcommittee meetings, where we're really going to be tearing into this information and getting it, you know, in a steady pace. That's my impression from the motion. I'd certainly be supporting it, but I know that my colleague's going to speak next. He may tell me I'm wrong.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you. No, actually, Ms. Martin hit it right on the head. That's exactly the intent of the motion. And, again, it's not to bypass the budget process, but, again, I think that we need to have a plan in front of us to have an idea where we're going from there. And, again, I think that Ms. Martin articulated exactly, I think, perfectly, so I won't belabor the question here. But the fact is, once again, I'm going back to that $9.5 million, and when we're talking about alarming people, they've already been alarmed at 9.5. And just for the clarification, I've already agreed with moving it up to January, which I think is, perhaps, is more appropriate, and that's fine with me. I think that it's perfectly clear that, you know, give another month would make, I think, make sense. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just in terms of process, support it, don't support it. What we'll be doing is the same format as the finance committee last year, beginning in January. We'll also be, as a finance chair, working with the mayor and Consular Elliott, the finance chair on the city side, we'll be bringing them into the process a lot earlier, so we can discuss the aforementioned 9.5 million. So, yes or no, we're definitely going to be having the same format, so you make a decision, I guess, going forward from there. I guess, any other discussion? And roll call?
Okay. Motion as amended, okay? Ms. Lariva?
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay. Motion as amended passes. Okay. Back to Chair 801.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leary. Next motion by Mr. Conway and Ms. Leahy, to ask the superintendent to report detailing what the current criteria procedures for transferring a student from Lowell High School to the Lowell High School Alternative Program currently located at the Malloy School, along with the current guidelines regarding the typical length of student placements at the Malloy site and the procedures supports in place when students return to the high school from the Malloy. In addition, to ask the superintendent to include the total enrollment at the Malloy program at the beginning and end of the 2008, 2009, 2009, 2010, 2010, 2011 school years, as well as practices related to reassigning students to the Malloy program if their placement at Lowell High School is deemed to be unsuccessful. We have a motion. We already have a second, so Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, again, I apologize for the lengthy motion here, but I wanted to make it as descriptive as possible, so that we could understand the motion. I think that, taking a look at the Malloy School at this particular point, I think it's important, going forward, that we take a look at the numbers that are there at the beginning of the year and also at the end of the year. I think it's also, when we go to 2010, 2011, that obviously is just at the beginning of the year. Those are the only numbers that we'll have. But I think it's important to find out, what are the policies when a student is moved to the Malloy School? There seems to be a little bit of confusion with that. And what is the policy and the plan when a student comes back to the high school? And also, another issue that has come up in the past, and I think we need clarification on it going forward, if the situation does not resolve itself with the student, is the student able to go back to the Malloy School? And I think, again, we need to have a plan in place to make sure that it's perfectly clear to the high school and to the Malloy School, and also to students and to parents. And I think that, at this particular point, and I've, you know, I've lived through this for a few years, and there was always confusion, to be quite frank with you. So I want to make sure that this is a perfectly clear process. And I think also, if we could add something to it, and that is the, how effective the process is. How effective the results of the students?
Want to add that as a substitute to the motion, or just to...
Yes. Yes, I'd like to add that.
Okay. So we're going to add, just to give the results, how effective the placements have been at the Malloy site. Is there a second to that? Second by... oh, no, second. Second by Ms. Martin. Mr. Leahy, as a co-maker of the motion?
Sure, thank you. My comment on the motion, when I was approached by Mr. Conway, is I thought it was a good motion. And basically, I mean, my thoughts on it are, we have a new headmaster, and we have a new director, and I think that the committee should be informed now of, you know, it's under new leadership, so what's the philosophy going to be, and what's the direction it's going to go in? And just to make it a... so it can be as effective of a process and be effective for the students. So, you know, we have an alternative school for a reason, we want to make the most of it, so the students get the most out of it, and we, as a system, get the most out of it. So I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lariva?
Through you to the superintendent, and perhaps my memory is faulty, didn't we have some of this discussion when we were in the budget process and discussing about putting the Malloy School in the high school and addressing some of these questions at that time?
Yes, we did inform the committee that we were and have been looking at how the Malloy School functions. So this motion is in keeping with many of the things that we've looked at over the last few months. So in addition to that, another motion with regards to our alternative programs by Ms. Doherty was also discussed, that we're looking at all our alternative schools throughout the system and assessing, again, how effective they are, can we do them better, and if so, how. As the committee knows, we did address issues at the Laurel Lane and the Lowell Blank very successfully, and there, again, we will be bringing forward a report on all of these schools.
So I'm just clarifying that we have had this information before?
No, that we're... it's a work in progress for us. We said that we...
We've had this conversation before.
Right. That we felt it was the need of this administration to bring that information forward, because we shared the concern about how effective some of these programs are being run. So that work is a work in progress for us, and a lot of work has been done, so it should be in short order.
Thank you.
Mr. Leary, then Ms. Doherty. Mr. Leary?
Just quick, I think there's another motion on the entire alternative program out there as well. So this is not, you know, this is asking questions. We have a new individual running the Malloy and running the Cardinal, so I think, you know, bringing that person forward, seeing their good, you know, their good work, have them really show us what they're doing, where they want to go with it, because part of these budget deliberations are going to be having those discussions. The history of it, having this discussion earlier, yes, we did. We're going to have it again. We're going to have all these discussions that we had last year yet again, because things we didn't cut last year are going to be looked at again. And I think if they add value, obviously, we want to keep them. I think we have good people in place running the Malloy. That's a good thing. How it works and how much money it costs and where we're going to go versus other priorities are going to be discussed. So if, you know, if we discussed it last year, be rest assured, unfortunately, it's going to be discussed again. And that's not to say that people aren't doing their job, it's just, we've got to cut $9.5 million. And decisions are going to have to be made and prioritized, and people are going to make votes, and you're not always going to like the vote you have to make, but you have to make them. And having discussions with our good people is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I did have a conversation with the superintendent when I saw that we had similar motions, and I offered to take mine off, but as she pointed out, mine does have a broader scope. As I recall, when we were going over budget deliberations, the number of... it was almost $1 million we're spending at the Malloy. And we talked in general during those discussions about how expensive our alternative programs are. And at that time, the superintendent expressed to us, in fact, I saw the report just today, I was trying to go through my piles of papers, where she says this is going to take careful planning, to look at what are some recommendations she may be bringing forward to us. So I think this motion by my colleagues is on target. We need to look very carefully at what we're doing at the Malloy, and my motion is not in conflict with that. It's saying we need to also, you know, look at the whole alternative education picture and see if we can, you know, really be as effective as possible with those dollars. So I think this is a good motion. I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the motion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Motion as amended passes.
You're two for two, Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next motion by Ms. Leary, request the superintendent to provide the school committee with the class enrollment number of students who are actually attending the class as of October 1, 2010, for each school outlined by grades, such as first grade, et cetera, and specialty, such as but not limited to physical education, music education, newcomers' program, Latin lyceum, special education, and alternative programs. In addition, provide the student-to-teacher slash paraprofessional ratio as part of the analysis. Second by Mr. Leahy. Mr. Leary?
Thank you. The only one, I think, the motion is something we do every year, basically, after 10/1, which is the date where we find how much chapter 70 monies we're going to be receiving the following year. So, you know, Mr. Dakota and his good people at the Parent Information Center, 99% of this motion is going to be like an exercise in running reports. Bang, done. The only one that I think might be somewhat ambiguous, after I looked at this again, is special education. That's somewhat wide open. If it's not doable, you know, it is what it is. I think, you know, the physical education, we can pull the numbers at the high school. How many people are taking a phys ed class? Easy, simple pie. Newcomers programs, we just... we just had those numbers presented two meetings ago. So that's easy. The reason for the motion, so people can understand, is not just to see how many people we have in first grade at the, you know, blankety-blank school, it's because we're going to be making decisions regarding teacher ratios and how many kids are in first grade, and the same discussion we have every year regarding the high school, how many kids are in, you know, the Algebra I classes, that type of deal. The data might take some time. I'm not looking for this at the end of October, but as we get into budget deliberations, this data is the most important piece of information we're going to look at. If there's anything ambiguous about it, definitely want to make it more precise, so folks have a comfort level, and, more importantly, make sure you can use this, so we can help make you make decisions or come up with creative ideas as we go through the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard of the motion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No, absent.
Mayor Melonazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, passes.
Next motion by Mr. Leary, request the superintendent to provide the school committee with the current update needs for books and computer technology equipment. Second by Mr. Leahy. Mr. Leary?
Just quick, I've just been talking to a lot of different parents out there. We had some books that are, you know, people are picking masking tape and other types of tape and duct taping books and putting them together, and I know we have very little money, all our money... well, we have a lot of money, okay, let's be fair, but it's allocated specifically to different areas already. But to get an idea, as we go through the budget process, where our needs are, especially in the computer technology equipment, I think it's one of the most important things that we do. It's not something that, again, again, it's really a budget line item, so we can prepare to making good decisions and finding areas where we have serious concerns, so we can allocate money for those concerns or go out and, you know, generate some revenue from grants or what have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, oppose, to vote. Next motion by Mr. Leahy, request that every school have readily available for parents to obtain upon request a list of tutorial services for their child or children. Second by Ms. Martin. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Motion basically speaks for itself. We just... I... we have already discussed this, but I just want to make sure that it's in place for this school year, that anybody that can go up to a principal of their school and get a list or know where to go for help for tutorial services. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, oppose, to vote. Next motion by Mr. Leahy, request the superintendent to work with Lowell High School administration to examine the Latin lyceum and prepare a report for the committee with suggestion on how to improve, expand, and/or grow the program. Second by Mr. Leary. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. This motion, obviously, this is going to be a work in progress over the year with new headmaster, but I think it's important that, after, I believe it's 11, maybe in its 12th year, that the program be reexamined. A lot of questions have come up over the years about the entry process, just being the exam. As we all know, there's quite a few families in Lowell that really wanted to get into this program, and because of the grade, the one... I think you get one chance to take the test, and that's it. And I've talked to a few people about this, and I just think it's only fair that we take a look at this and examine it and say, "Look at... do we want..." I know it's a... when the... I read the original motion, I would think that by now, it should have been expanded. It's meant to have... it's really not meant to keep kids out, but it is meant to be a have been expanded. It's meant to have, it's really not meant to keep kids out, but it is meant to be a rigorous program. And I just don't think that 50 kids, children a year is what, after 11 years, that was the intention of it. I would like to see, you know, anywhere up to 100 kids in it, if that's what the program called for. But I think it's time that be evaluated and maybe, I don't know if I put in the motion, but, you know, we would like to have in the report suggestions on where the program's going to go next year. And that planning would be done, obviously, in the budget. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy. Ms. Lariva.
Thank you. I certainly understand the value of examining a program, seeing how it's, it's working, areas to improve it and/or grow it. And in that respect, I do support what you're saying. I do not, however, support this if this is going to be about giving families an opportunity to get their kids in the program when they failed an exam. It's set up as an exam-based school because it is a rigorous program. So, yes, it is one exam, that's your chance. If you don't have it, if you don't make it, then you're not in the program. We've had several concerns about the Lyceum program in terms of continuity across the curriculum. If we're looking at the small number of students that do not pass the exams, I would rather we look at the middle school and find out why they're not preparing these kids better to pass a rigorous exam. So, if the intent is to address some needs in the middle school, I'm all for this, but if this is a way to get certain families an ability to get their children in under the wire, worse, or around what is a basis of this program, being an exam-based rigorous program, then I am not going to go ahead and support that part. Because I think part of the problem, or actually, most of the problem, is coming out of the middle school and not having our kids prepared appropriately, not just for the Lyceum but for the high school. And we've addressed that for most students with the freshman academy, but you still find in the Lyceum program that there are some issues about support for these kids in the transition. Those are issues that have been brought up by the Latin Lyceum Parents Association. The watering down of the program over the last couple of years has also been brought up by that. The fact that there is no set guidance counselor, those are all legitimate, in my mind, issues to look at the program. But I just want to go on record that I'm not looking to make this an easier in for the, you know, quote, "families of Lowell" that want to have their children in this school. It's meant as an exam-based school, it's meant as a rigorous program, and that would be a disservice to all the kids that worked very hard to pass those exams.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. As a parent of a child in the Latin Lyceum and not in the Latin Lyceum, I heartily support Mr. Leahy's motion to take a look at how we can improve the program. I would also support a motion to look at how we can improve the Communications Academy, which I believe has a deplorable small number of students involved when you consider the great expense and quality of equipment that we have in our own television studio. So, I think as we get into nuances about what changes or what things we're looking at, I think we should start with seeing what the high school comes, you know, what their response is to this motion in terms of looking at their suggestions about ways to improve just in terms of Lowell High School Subcommittee. Last year, we had a couple of reports that I think were cause for concern about the attrition rates. Not only the number that get in, but why don't those students stay in the Latin Lyceum? So, as I said, I'm wholeheartedly supporting this motion without making judgments on the information. Let's see what comes forward from it, from the high school. I'm looking at it as, you know, his line here about suggestions on how to improve, expand, or grow the program. And I would consider that to mean include the students who start with us to get, you know, to get them to stay. But I think there are other academies at the high school that we also need to look at, and I just put that out there, some future motion. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy, Mr. Leary, then Ms. Lariva.
Thank you. As Ms. Doherty just said, yeah, with the line in there for suggestions, I mean, that, when I read the original motion 10 or 12 years ago from Mr. Topia, the intent was to keep Lowell kids in Lowell, at Lowell High. It was meant to be a rigorous program. But over the years, I don't think it's wrong to look at it and say, well, if 50 children pass the test and only 45 elect to go in it, we should consider opening up those extra five spaces. But I think there is a real problem when you have a handful of students that get a scholarship to schools that are number one in New England, and they're going there when they really wanted to stay in Lowell. That's a problem. Because these people, these families want to stay, and they want to go to Lowell High. I understand the way the program's running right now, and that's the way it is. But I honestly think that it should be looked at because we have great families that want to stay in Lowell. So, the intent was to keep children at Lowell High and give them the same rigorous education that, I guess, quite frankly, that they have to pay a lot of money for at another private institute. Thank you.
Mr. Leary.
Thank you. I'm going to support the motion, and I'm going to support the other motion regarding advanced placement. I think these discussions are timely because we do have a new headmaster, and we're going to be looking for his guidance in the next six, well, next three or four months for recommendations on how we're going to be planning our budget going forward. And looking for his recommendations, as well, through the superintendent's recommendations, on how we handle certain issues. Latin Lyceum comes up every year, and I'm willing to go through a four-hour marathon discussion about it again, pumped up to do it. I think it has high value because it is an excellent program. And I can see why people want to be a part of it because it does have high value. I voted time and time again not to have two tests and have other ways of getting in. I'll probably stay with that example going forward. But I think an interesting point was made regarding middle schools in terms of preparation. I would take it another step backwards. Maybe it's more about information to people who, when they're entering sixth grade, have some type of dialogue, or fifth grade, excuse me, dialogue in terms of, here's what we have at the high school. It may be already being done, and I'm going out of step. What are we doing to folks, not young folks, to their parents, saying, we have these programs at the high school as they enter fifth grade? Because if you're in eighth grade and you haven't done it in fifth grade, sixth grade, you're never going to do it in the last semester. And that's really preparing for the test. And I don't think, we're not, I think we are preparing our kids in the middle schools, but you can always do some type of information guide to these folks to make it go forward. Again, we've got to look at the whole high school as we do K through eight. So, all this stuff is good stuff because it's timely and it's, we're going to have to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lariva, then Mr. Conway.
Thank you. And as Mr. Leary just said, in terms of the AP motion that follows this, this is also part of, I think, a broader conversation about the reorganization of Lowell High School and some of the suggestions that the new headmaster is going to have. And let me be clear, I'm not saying that the program shouldn't be looked at and ways to improve it should not be addressed. And as I said earlier, there are some very specific concerns that have come up from parent groups. And I have said time and again before, my concerns about middle school preparation for high school. But I did need to address your comment about the exam and my concern for that. But I will support the motion as written.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a, I think it's a very good motion. And I think that, you know, any type of program that we have, we're obviously have to take a look at it and examine it and find out, refine it, to make sure that we have the best program going forward for our students. You know, if you take a look at, for example, what's going on in the colleges today, back a few years ago, there was tremendous emphasis that was placed on the SATs. And colleges took a look at that and realized that that wasn't necessarily the best barometer. There were other things that should weigh more than just that specific test. So, I think it's good that we take a look at this particular program because I know that there have been students, great students, that have gone on, been very successful, gone on to great colleges, and they didn't get into the Latin Lyceum. And I know that people scratch their head and say, well, why didn't they? Was it because of the test? You know, is, is how much, what percentage of that acceptance is placed on the test? So, again, I think it's very good to put everything on the table. Once again, I think Mr. Leary said, you know, we've discussed this before. And again, we're going to be discussing these programs year after year so that, I think it's our job. It takes a lot of work, but I think it's our job to make sure that we have our best programs for our students and constantly refining them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one final point as the administration passes along this to the headmaster to take a look at. Because I think one of the other things that became quite clear is that Mr. Conway's point about relying exclusively on a test certainly has been proven out in the direction he's mentioned. But I also think, pretty dramatically, we've heard from parents that there are students who've made it into the Lyceum who don't have the appropriate study skills, who don't, who aren't performing in that environment. And I think that, you know, I don't propose to have a solution to that, but I think it goes both ways. I think that there are, if we're looking at the Lyceum, we also need to be looking at, are the appropriate students in there? It is meant to be fairly specific and fairly limited in the type of student that participates. And I know one of the shocks I had had in hearing from Lyceum parents was that they felt their students coming in from middle school weren't prepared. And I think that's maybe saying something certainly about what we need to be paying attention to in our middle schools. But it also says something about how are these students then getting into the Lyceum? If the Lyceum isn't, isn't, if the test alone isn't enough to tell us who will be successful there, then we need to build other mechanisms in place. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye, opposed, vote. Thank you. Next motion by Mr. Leahy to ask the superintendent to report to the committee a follow-up to last year's discussion on advanced placement testing at Lowell High School. Second by Mr. Leary. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. Yeah, basically, what I'm looking for is just not so much a report, you know, per se, but at the next Lowell High Subcommittee meeting, we just have a follow-up. I'm sure you've heard the discussion from us and from parents, their concerns, and even the concerns last year at the Lowell High meeting about the AP test scores versus the classroom scores. So, just would like to follow up on this, get the high school involved again and get with the new headmaster, have him take a look at the situation, report back to us. So, you know, not so much a report that has to be done next week, but just an ongoing discussion about this. So, we can, again, improve this and listen to what the parents at the high school are telling us and be responsive. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
I'd just like to add to that if I could. We got a very good report on the AP test scores that I think went back maybe two years or three years, that the superintendent was instrumental in getting for us, and I appreciate that. And what I see from this motion is we now have new information because the 2010 scores are in. So, this would be an opportunity to kind of look at, how did the kids do in 2010? Kind of add that on to what we've already accumulated that goes back a year or two and have, as my colleague says, an ongoing dialogue about how we can improve our AP program. So, I think it's a great motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, opposed, vote. Thank you. Next motion by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent to update the committee on any plans or changes regarding the alternative school programs, particularly at the Malloy School. Second by Mr. Leahy. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I already kind of spoke on this one. It would be to add on to the information about the Malloy, but also looking at what's our overall plan with the alternative programs. And that would be, you know, going forward in terms of how we make budget decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, opposed, vote. Last motion of the evening by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent to provide a data summit for the Curriculum Subcommittee that includes discussion and comprehensive analysis of recent MCAS and growth model data for the district, as well as a report on the district CPI scores over the last five years by school and grade. Second by Mr. Conway. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to say right at the outset that this information has already been done in terms of the data we've already seen. My concern with it was, we looked, we had a great spotlight on excellence where we looked at some of our schools that had huge growth in student learning. But that wasn't the entire picture. And I know that the superintendent and her staff has been going out and meeting with our principals, and the principals then are meeting with their staff, having these data summits where they're looking very closely at the data. My goal was to have kind of our own little school committee data summit where we could have an opportunity to ask some questions, looking at some of the Lowes, where schools that haven't performed as well as others, and discussing what are some of the initiatives and plans in place for those areas. The last sentence that refers to the CPI scores, that is also data that's readily available. I know in conversations with Deputy Superintendent Franco, it would not be very time-consuming to pull this out and look over what are our trends by schools? Because we should obviously be seeing more and more students. Our percentages are getting higher and higher. Students are reaching proficiency on the CPI. It's just another measure. And for me, I just think it's important that we have a very clear understanding of where we've come as a district, what are our challenges that we still face in terms of student performance? Because at the end of the day, that's why we're all here, student learning. So, I appreciate support on this. And I hope my chair of the Curriculum Subcommittee doesn't have a problem with me asking for a data summit. But I thought it would be a good opportunity to get some of my questions aired and just kind of educate all of us to more of the details about the data and what it's telling us about our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
I also invite the committee, as we go through the fall, I'll be meeting with parent communities, so our PTO organizations, at some of our schools where we're concerned with the growth data. So, we'll be meeting with parents to share all of the data because we really do need our parents to rally around us and support us. But they too will benefit, just like our staff, to know what our areas of difficulty are, what areas are of great concern to the district. And we really do think that not only having these conversations with our staff, but with our communities where we see that we really do need our parents to rally. So, the most recent one is being scheduled, the flyers going out this week to the Sullivan School community, and that will occur in the next two weeks. And then we'll just proceed, as the calendar allows, to engage our communities where we see that we need to share exactly what does the data say and what do we need to work on, and we need their help.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, opposed, vote. Moving on with the agenda, under Subcommittee Reports, the First Subcommittee, Facility Subcommittee, report an approval of the minutes of the meeting of September 27, 2010 by Chairman, Mr. Leahy. Chair recognizes Mr. Leahy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let's see, Monday, September 27, we had the Facility Subcommittee meeting. In attendance were myself, Mr. Leary, Ms. Doherty, and Your Honor. Also present, Mr. Lang, and that was it. So, first on the agenda, we talked about the Maury Elementary School dedication. We came up with four possible dates, and we're in the process right now of scheduling that. So, not going to be good dates for all six or seven of us, but we're going to do the best we can. So, whatever we come up with, it'll be on a weekend or a weekday to involve the kids. So, we're in the process of picking a date, and then we will have the dedication. One other question that came up about the Maury, question from the mayor asking about the school name. The CW seems to be missing off of the Maury School. It used to be the CW Maury School, and now it's just the Maury School. So, Mr. Lang's looking into that. Second item on the agenda was facility updates, just an ongoing conversation from last February at the high school. Mr. Lang is going to provide us with some updates on lighting on the stage at the freshman academy, the security for locker rooms, the cleanup of the hallways and bathrooms at big events such as the wrestling and basketball tournaments. And then we talked a little bit about, let's see, the potential for a fall or a spring parent-student cleanup at all our schools. Because, as you know, with the cuts- parent-student cleanup at all our schools, because as you know, with the cuts in recent years, it'd be nice to just to get out there and pick up a little bit more of that trash around our schools. And that was about, it was a quick meeting, and we just had a motion to accept the reports as a report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Any further discussion? Motion to approve the Facility Subcommittee meeting minutes as presented by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the vote. Thank you. The next Subcommittee, Personnel Subcommittee, report an approval of the minutes of the meeting of September 27, 2010. Ms. Martin, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The meeting was held, and in fact, the entire school committee was present at this Subcommittee meeting. The purpose of our meeting was to respond to a motion by Mr. Conway and Ms. Lariba to begin the process of renegotiating the superintendent's contract. So, the meeting was held on September 27, basically for the purpose of laying out what our process would be. We did receive from the superintendent as part, which is stated in her contract, her request to negotiate, her interest in remaining. So, that kind of kicks off the process for us. Based on the conversations of the full committee, it was determined that the committee would like to schedule a meeting for the full Lowell School Committee. It will be a meeting that is held in executive session with our representative, City Solicitor Christine O'Connor. It was discussed at the meeting that every member of the committee would come prepared at that point, having had some additional information forwarded by Ms. Lariba around some evaluation opportunities and directions we may want to go in, and that we'd be looking at that meeting, again, to be held in executive session, to come up with the committees, the school committees' kind of negotiating position. After that, we would be scheduling a meeting for the full school committee with our representative to meet with the superintendent and her legal representative, so that we would hope we'd be able to make our presentation. The superintendent would be able to do that as well, and we are hoping that in the course of that meeting, we'd be able to conclude our negotiations. Basically, I know that the superintendent's secretary has contacted us, I believe today, to set up that initial meeting. I haven't had a chance to respond to her yet, maybe you all have, I'm sorry, to set up that meeting. And then, so hopefully, we'll be able to do this in a very timely way. I know we're all committed to making sure that it happens in as quick a possible timeline. So, the only thing I would suspect is that we need to approve the report as a report of progress and begin the process.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Lariba, to accept the report of the Personnel Subcommittee as a report of progress. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the vote. Thank you. Next Subcommittee meeting is the Athletic Subcommittee, report an approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, October 4. The Chair, Mr. Conway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first of all, want to apologize for the length, and I also want to thank Jean Franco, Deputy Superintendent, for doing a great job here with this report. With myself, John Leahy, Jackie Doherty on the committee, and also Jim Leary was present, Dr. Scott, Superintendent, Jean Franco, Ed Rosmaric, Lowell High School Headmaster, and also James DiProffio was the Athletic Director. We had a few items that was on, that were on the docket. The first one was by, it was a motion by Jackie Doherty on the athletic filming report, and just very quickly, request the superintendent to provide the committee with information regarding the videotaping of the high school sports, and what sports are videotaped, what are the tapes used for, and who does the videotaping, what the cost associated with this activity, who determines what gets taped when, and what is the policy. And the Athletic Director, Jimmy DiProffio, explained the new partnership that we have with, I believe it's HUDL. It's an online video website business that posts film sports events. And the Mermack Valley hired this company, and apparently, we have to be part of it, to post games for online for review in the Mermack Valley as the per-league policy. A volunteer assistant coach films the games, the service is being reviewed by the league, and will be assessed for quality and the value at the end of the year to find out if this is something that we want to go forward with. As far as the other sports are concerned, there was not a definite policy in place on videotaping any particular sports. We did talk about the equity issue on what sport should be filmed, and some sports are filmed for teaching purposes by Channel 22, but that's kind of like a hit or miss. Oftentimes, some sports are filmed by the Friends of Lowell High School or volunteers. And he talked about the potential of this HUDL video website for future use in other sports, and so that it would probably take care of the equity issue. And this program will be reviewed at the end of the year. Mr. DiProffio also stated that parents do not, do have the right to tape students, and copies would be made for the families through the Communications Academy. And other topics in that, with that motion was the, we talked about the lack of equipment, the need for a plan to provide for more access to filming, and also the use of film for training. There was just a report of progress, I believe, on that. Oh, I'm sorry, no. Thank you. Developed a formalized, this was a motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy, to recommend to the committee as a whole, develop a formalized collaborative plan with Channel 2 to coordinate efforts for an equitable system of videotaping sport events and return to the Subcommittee with suggestions, which may include an option for student internships. And it was accepted 3-0, and I think, Mr. Mayor, does this have to go to the full committee?
Again, according to the motion, it does not, but according to what you just said, recommend to the committee of the whole, it would. So, if that's the intent, then yes, the answer is yes. It would go to the whole committee. So, if you want us now, at this point, to take that...
Why don't we do that? We'll get that taken care of.
So, again, motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary, that we develop a formalized collaborative plan with Channel 22 to coordinate efforts for the equitable system of videotaping sporting events, and return to the committee of the whole with suggestions which may include an option for student internships. Roll call.
Ms. Lariba.
Sorry? Ms. Doherty.
I'm just wondering if there was an opportunity for discussion on this, or do you think we don't need it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Again, you were at the Subcommittee meeting, I just didn't know if you wanted to discuss it again, but go right ahead.
Well, I'm not sure if my colleagues might have questions about it, because I think what we found, and I think it says in the minutes, that we don't have a defined policy for the filming of sports. We've been videotaping football. It's kind of a past-practice thing. It's not required by the MIAA, but the Mermack Valley League requires that each team share two videotapes of their team, so that they can see what the competition, I guess. And that is past-practice in football. But what came out during the discussion was, we have other teams that could also benefit from, the videotapes from the football can be used for college recruiting. Whereas, if you have a child that plays soccer or lacrosse, you don't have those options. And although it's not in the minutes, to belong to this online video service, HUDL, it costs $720 a year. In addition, the athletics department purchased a camera for $560. This money came out of the general athletics fund, but it's only benefiting the football students, football players at this point. Last year, they just hired a contractor, an outside person, to videotape their games, and the cost was significantly higher. So, this is, you know, it's a benefit plus the option of getting these videotapes online, that people can access them much easier. But as the discussion went around with equity for other sports, I mean, I really think this is kind of a policy decision that we need to think about as a committee. You know, should general funds be taking out, taken out of athletics general funds and just applied to one sport that other students don't have that option who play other sports? And then, part of the discussion was looking at, what are some options we have? And this is why I wanted to bring it up, because I think it's this, a key component in the motion that Mr. Leahy mentioned was the idea of students being able to get credit. A few years ago, I don't know exactly how many, but students at the Television Academy, the Communications Academy, would take TV production courses, and they would get multiple credits, like instead of being a two-and-a-half credit course, it maybe was a five-credit course, because part of the course entailed outside-class projects, where they would actually videotape, whether it was events after school, sports, whatever. And that was part of their requirement for the course. Since then, we're not offering so many of those TV production courses. We've gone more to digital photography and things like that. So, the hope with this motion is that we're going to do some collaboration with athletics and the Channel 22, to look at how we might coordinate efforts to have a more equitable program in place for videotaping. Now, that doesn't mean we're going to videotape every soccer game and every lacrosse game, but there's going to be a concerted effort to say, okay, we've got to do at least two football games, or maybe even do more than that, but let's try to, in the fall, also do a couple of, you know, girl soccer game, boy soccer game. It's an equity issue that I think is really at the heart of this, that was for me as the original maker of the motion. And so, this motion is really asking for the high school to see if there's a way we can make this happen, knowing that we've got limited funds. And really, again, as came up earlier this evening, looking at the Communications Academy and what is the capability there, that perhaps we really have not been tapping into. That's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Mr. DiProffio for saving costs on a mandatory filming of football games. I know we kind of ran over, MIAA doesn't do it, but the Mermack Valley League does do it. So, it has to be done. We did save, I don't have the numbers in here how much he saved, I thought it was almost, he saved, you know, half. I mean, the cost is cut in half because of his aggressive movement in this area. And in addition, hopefully, the motion, which I'm definitely going to support, because it's a good motion, hopefully, the technology alone will enhance doing this for everybody and for all sports. I agree with the comments regarding getting the Communication Academy involved with it, because that's just a great thing. And maybe that'll spark an interest for students that can, will go out and notice that they can, and we want to have filming of more games. But again, Mr. DiProffio was, you know, I don't always agree with Mr. DiProffio, but he was very aggressive here, and he did save costs for something that we're required to do. So, I want to thank him publicly, and I think the motion's a very good motion, that hopefully we can have this technology help all of our sports programs, and definitely different programs like the band and what have you, where this also may be used in areas we never really thought of before. So, it's a good motion, definitely going to support it, and thank you, Mr. DiProffio.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Anyone else on the motion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Millaniso.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To continue, again, it was a rather lengthy meeting of an hour and a half, so I want to try to, I want to try to state the salient points here, and that is, the second topic was the athletic community advertising. And that was a motion that I put on, asking the superintendent, the Athletic Director, to investigate the feasibility of offering local businesses and other revenue sources the opportunity to advertise their services through various school-related activities, events with the revenues received, through such activities to be used to help sustain our athletic program. And the idea of that motion, Mr. Mayor, was the fact that, time and time again, we go to the community, our partners, and we ask them to contribute to our schools, which they do. And they've been extremely helpful. But as we all know, times are very difficult economically, and everyone has to tighten their belts. And when you talk about how much money can they afford to give out in, should we say, charity, that becomes limited. So, that's why I thought that it would be a good idea to take a look at this and see that maybe we could tap into their advertising budget. Because the bottom line is, you have to advertise, and if a company feels that it's going to be effective and they're going to make money, then let's do it. And that's why that motion was put forward. Mr. DiProffio spoke on the motion to increase the revenue by improving community advertising. His ideas include increasing signage to promote supporters' interest in athletics in the following areas. These are just four highlights that we've talked about. Home-team marketing to display signs and make announcements during the games. And again, he obviously took time and explained it in a lot more detail than what we're going to be doing tonight. He also talked about passing out advertising information at games, using the above, excuse me, using the above the influence campaign, prevention, drug use with team logo, also increased signage and multimedia scoreboards. Again, these are some of the things that he's working on right now, and I think that we tried to certainly, you know, let him know that these are great ideas, now what we need to see is some of this put into action. And I know that he has been working on it. These are not easy things to get accomplished, and it's going to take time, and it's going to take effort, and a number of people putting them together. So, I congratulate him on that effort. I believe we had a, let's see, that was a report of progress with the three members voting in the positive. And the next, the next part that we talked about was the athletic strategy plan, and that was to ask the superintendent, even though some people might thought it was very similar to the advertising, but it was to ask the superintendent, the Athletic Director, to develop and implement a comprehensive strategy to promote our athletic program. And I think that's something that's very different, because we need a feeder system. We need a feeder system of athletes and also fans. And I think that we've been working on that. I know Mr. DiProffio has, he is sending out a newsletter every week to the community. And again, what it does is it highlights, Mr. Mayor, the different sports that are going on at that particular time, and what is going to be coming up. And I think a lot of people appreciate that, and they like to see that information. And that's going out every week. Also, we talked about the giving younger students tickets to events as a strategy to increase student interest and participation in athletics. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if everyone here has had the opportunity to go out to Shed Park on a Thursday, and all the middle schools are out there with a cross-country track meet. And, you know, the first time I went out there, I was, I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe that all those schools were out there, and all the kids were very, very excited. Not only the kids were excited, but the parents. There were many, many parents out there. Teachers were there to support administrators. And I'll tell you, Mr. Mayor, it was just an absolutely great, great opportunity. And when you take a look at that, as I said to, we said to the Athletic Director, here's our feeder system right here. Why not give those tickets to the middle school principals and come up with an idea of passing those tickets out, and perhaps they could go to the game, bring a parent, if they had an adult with them, they could go in free. And once again, it gets students interested in different types of activities and sports, and I think it's great for the community. Increasing the overall use of school colors and logo was a thought, creating alumni row and prepaid reserve tickets. And I understand that that is going on at this particular time, or I think it was going on at this point. And using also the local television and radio, as well as Channel 22, for more exposure, letting people know what is happening in the community. And again, telling the community what the positive things that are happening here with our schools and our students. And that was, again, another report... another report of, uh, progress, uh, with a, uh, a three-zero, uh, acceptance. And the last one, uh, which wasn't, uh, was kind of an add-on, was a request to hold, uh, a cereal fundraiser. And, uh, Mr. Di Profio brought in a, a box of cereal, and he was requesting the approval from the, from the subcommittee to participate in the, uh, community, it was called Community Crunch Program, a fundraising opportunity that sells cereal, uh, in the community. And he said that there were three options that were available, and I believe he said the, the second option was the one that, that he would, uh, recommend. First option is the market, the marketing sale of a customized package designed, developed by the company in years, a profit of 25 cents, uh, per box. Another one was, um, uh, option two allows for the marketing of a customized package designed by the school system and sold by the company with defined information from the city and yields a profit of 50 cents a box. And option three makes the school district responsible for product design and sale of the product, which obviously nobody wanted to do that. Um, I think Mr. Leahy brought up an excellent point, uh, where he mentioned the, and I would ask him if he would, uh, elaborate on this, if that's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, because, uh, there was a concern that he had about, uh, we have great, uh, companies right in our, in our city, and why not give them the opportunity to do the same thing? And, um, could, i- if it's all right, I know it might be a little out of order, but I believe Mr. Leahy has done a, a little bit of research on that, if he could, if he could step in at this point?
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, after hearing the proposal at the meeting, uh, my only suggestion was that, um, we should afford, uh, Mr. Demoulin to, the opportunity to take a look at this program, see if it makes sense, see if it could benefit us with him. Um, obviously, they have a great number of stores, and, you know, I was seeing dollar signs. But, uh, unfortunately, uh, at this time, it, it, situation doesn't work out for him. Uh, he thanked, thanked us for the opportunity, you know, considering him. Uh, and, you know, in part, he does so much for the community, his family, that, um, we thought of him, and we should afford him the opportunity. But, uh, so as of now, I guess, uh, I'll turn it back to Mr. Conway, but, um, it looks like, I think they want to, us to vote on this.
I, I, right, and I, and I, Mr. Mayor, and I, and I wouldn't necessarily just limit it to Demoulin's and Market Basket, but obviously Hannaford's is, is in our, our community, and I think they should be given that opportunity too. But I think, and we made that perfectly clear to the athletic director to check into that. But I think that there is a, a, a motion that was to accept the recommendation from the athletic director to accept option two and bring the motion forward to the entire committee. So, I think we'll have to go for a, a vote on that, in order to allow the athletic, uh, director to continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Leary?
Thank you. I, uh, first, I, I really, Mr. Di Profio pointed out a name of a, one of our coaches, Danielle Clermont, the girls lacrosse, varsity lacrosse coach, who really helped him, you know, develop a lot of these marketing strategies. And Mr. Di Profio is a high school principal and athletic director. He's not a Madison Avenue, uh, marketing representative, although we're asking folks to do, in all seriousness, asking folks to do stuff that they'd never done before. So, I want to give kudos to, uh, Danielle Clermont for working with him, and, you know, she has expertise in, um, sports marketing. So, it's very cool that we have people that step up to the plate, and she should be recognized. Um, you know, I think we got to reach out to different areas to, to generate monies because we don't have it. Uh, Mr. Di Profio, our, isn't, if it was at the Volk, we'd have a PR director, but we don't, we're not the Volk, so we'll, Mr. Di Profio can be our athletic director, PR director, marketing VP, I guess. So, it's a very good thing, and I want to thank him again publicly, too. Thanks.
Well, it, just very quickly, Mr. Mayor, it certainly shows that, that our staff is, is multi-talented and can, and can take on just about any task.
Thank you, Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Dougherty?
And just in terms of the actual motion that's before us, the plan is that this company has a cereal, I guess, and we, our students, or I think of it as our students, could come up with a design of the box. And they're looking at some kind of a name like Mill City Munch, or might have history about Little High. And then, for every box that gets sold, we'd get 50 cents. So, we're now getting into the breakfast food market. But that is the plan with this, uh, proposal. It's, it's a fundraising plan.
Uh, Ms. Martin?
I would just like to know which member of the school committee is going to do the Bruce Jenner pose for, uh, the cover of the cereal box, because I will buy several boxes, I will tell you right now.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we should go to the vote.
Correct. Well, let's have a motion. Motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary, that we, um, recommend to the committee the option two, which allows for the marketing of a customized package designed by the school system and sold by the company with defined information from the city and yields a profit of 50 cents per box, which is the recommendation of the subcommittee. Roll call.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes, as long as it's not Mill City Munch.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milleniso?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Anything else, Mr. Conway?
No, sir.
Right. Motion, motion by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Leahy, that we accept the report of the athletic subcommittee as a report of progress. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Vote to vote. Thank you. Reports of the superintendent. The first one is the Race to the Top update. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, last Friday, we were invited, uh, to a statewide meeting, um, which was, uh, held by, uh, the Commissioner of, um, our Education Department, as well as the Secretary of Education, Paul Revelle. And, uh, they did, uh, make it clear at that meeting that this year would be a planning year going forward. And, uh, as I've mentioned to the committee before, uh, we have signed up, uh, for five particular areas of Race to the Top, uh, and I'll just go over those again, to implement the statewide educator, educator evaluation framework, and that includes teachers and principals. And it is my understanding that the state is coming up with that tool, uh, this winter, and that the regulations, uh, will be changed within the state with the expectations that all districts, uh, will use those evaluation tools. Uh, number two, to align curriculum to the common core state standards, uh, that the state has recently adopted. Our Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chester, is, uh, heading, uh, actually, all of the states in the country on that particular initiative. Uh, so we are, uh, looking forward to more guidance on that particular point. Uh, to strengthen our climate, our condition and school culture, uh, low public schools in 2008 participated in a TELS survey, and the state is proposing, uh, to do that again in the spring of 2011, and again in 2013. Um, create near, uh, real-time access to data and education data warehouse by implementing the school's interoperability framework, and that's the, uh, new acronym SIF. And basically, that will allow us, uh, to better equip our teachers to analyze their data in their schools. And we're also going to participate in the college and career readiness strand under Mass Core, and we'll have a STEM focus. Um, the state is recommending that school departments in their first year, their planning year, only spend up to five to 15 percent of the 3.6 million that we have received. And the RFP process, um, that we presently have teams of, uh, people working on throughout our system based on their areas of expertise. Um, we, again, put an invitation note to any school committee member that would like, uh, to be part of this team as we go forward. And, um, we will, uh, hopefully have all of those, uh, submitted to the state on October 22nd, and, uh, we'll have them on the agenda at the following school committee meeting.
Ms. Dougherty, then Ms. Laraba.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the superintendent. Um, do you know when these meetings are going to happen, these planning meetings? Would that be with the state? When you say you're looking for...
That's internally.
Oh, that, so they would be scheduled internally? Okay. And are you looking for, oh, just to follow up to that. So, are you looking for us to designate one person as a school committee member of the team, or that when you have these meetings, if members of the school committee can't attend, we attend? What, do you prefer, what option of those?
Whatever the wish of the committee is, it can be flexible. Uh, we can inform you of, uh, when the planning meetings are, and if people can attend, um, that would be great to attend. In, in the past, uh, committee member Martin and yourself attended, uh, the state meetings. Uh, when the state meetings are, are posted for Race to the Top, we do inform, um, the committee because there is an expectation that there'll be committee involvement, union involvement, and management involvement. So, um, I would like to be flexible on the point of when we have our planning meetings, so just, so that people can come. It, it doesn't have to be just one person, it doesn't have to be two, as many people who want to be involved in the process, um, because they're huge initiatives for us. For example, one of the initiatives, um, that we will be addressing, um, is the state is giving us the ability to look at our, all of our HR, uh, processes and all their functions. Uh, that's a huge initiative for us, and that'll take three years to implement, but it is really an opportunity for us to modernize our HR systems and bring them up to date. Um, so we're really, um, looking forward to piggybacking on that state initiative. So, it would be, um, helpful, um, to have community, uh, community and, uh, school committee involvement, uh, as we go along. But as the, uh, projects are developed, we'll be giving you continuous updates, um, at that time. But, uh, again, there is an expectation by the state that we'll all be involved.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba, then Mr. Leary. Did you give a hand up? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leary.
No, I just, I don't want to supersede my, my, uh, responsibility or authority, but I think really, as long as, we got to make sure any one of us can attend, but I think the curriculum, um, excuse me, I'm choking over here. The, the curriculum chair, who can't save me because she's in, you know, first aid, um, should be part of that, and definitely coordinating with that, because we all have our specialties in terms of chairing whatever committee. But if, if we can definitely get the curriculum, uh, chairperson involved with that as a, as a direct liaison, I think that's, that's, that's where we got to begin. And anybody should be able to attend, but as long as that person is the focal point and our leader in that area.
Madam Superintendent?
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that. So, we have put teams of people together to look at the RFPs for each one of these areas based on their expertise. So, um, the curriculum office, um, actually, uh, 90 percent of the responsibility really has, uh, fallen to them. So, we will, as those meetings get set up, uh, we will ask you to join us.
Yeah, what I kind of meant was the school committee, I understood the administration thing. I meant like the curriculum chair of the school committee be part of that, and that person also is our personnel chairperson, so that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the report? Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Vote to vote. Next report, accommodation schools. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. As we mentioned, uh, when we had our Spotlight on Excellence with regards to our MCAS, uh, growth in the system, and, uh, many of our schools, uh, have achieved significant growth. The four schools, um, that were identified in Lowell as, uh, accommodation schools, are, again, are the Lincoln, the Maury, the Wang, and the Shaughnessy. And those schools really, over time, have shown a great improvement. And, um, I think it's important to, uh, highlight, uh, the work at those schools. And it's important, I think, also for the committee to know that, um, best practices are going on in many of our schools, not just these schools. But we are, as we go, uh, from school to school, highlighting the areas that we need to improve upon, uh, to highlight what is working well in other schools, so that, um, there's a cross-pollination and that people will, um, work with, uh, not only people in their schools, but go to other schools, um, that are showing promising growth. So, um, again, congratulations, uh, to all of those schools, uh, for the high growth. There were 187 schools in the total Commonwealth, um, that were placed on, uh, this list, which we call the honor list. And it's very impressive that four of our schools were placed on the list, and, um, definitely of all the urban districts, um, as low public schools service as the second highest population of English language learners, uh, this is, uh, indeed, something to be very proud of as we go forward.
Thank you. Congratulations. Any comments on the report? All those in favor of accepting the report as a report of progress signify by saying aye. Vote to vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Laraba. Accept the report as a report of progress. Thank you. Next item, the turnaround plan. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the, the turnaround plan in front of you is for our Merklin School, which was designated last year as a level four school. And the turnaround process that the Merklin, uh, school community has gone through over, uh, the past many months, uh, has been, um, a, a process that the state has, uh, clearly laid out for us. There were very strict procedures and, uh, policies and procedures that we had to, uh, follow. Um, the plan in front of you tonight, uh, is the first plan, and the second, more detailed plan, called the redesign plan, is to be submitted to the state and then to the federal government in January. So, this is like the intro to the bigger plan. Um, this gives the state an opportunity to give us feedback on our thinking, uh, if we're on target or not, uh, because it is the redesign plan that will trigger our ability to tap, uh, half a million dollars a year, um, from FY12, uh, for the three consecutive years after that. So, um, the plan in front of you is, uh, very detailed, uh, but I do think that it shows the commitment, uh, to low public schools and the community at large to the Merklin School. I would like to, uh, at this point, acknowledge the work that the staff has done at the Merklin School. Uh, it's, uh, it is very impressive, and how they've embraced change at that school and moving, uh, their school forward. There's definitely a sense of urgency. Uh, Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco and her cha- team, uh, and I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Jim Neary for his work, uh, not only on, uh, the writing of this plan, uh, but being a district point person, uh, to make the connection between the district and the school. Um, again, it's a lengthy plan. Um, I don't know if it's, you know, to what extent you'd like more details on the floor tonight. Um, but as we, uh, move forward and present the redesign plan, uh, we will be giving you a PowerPoint presentation, uh, on, uh, the details. Um, but I do believe, um, to show, um, again, that you're in support of the process as we presently, where we presently stand and going forward, it would be appropriate, I think, to have, uh, a vote of support.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba, then Mr. Conway.
Very impressive plan, and I appreciate the time and energy that went into, um, setting it out. And I recognize that some of the, um, things that you've discussed have already been implemented. Um, and some of the comments and feedbacks that I've heard, uh, regarding those changes have been very positive. Uh, so I think it's a, um, reflection on you and your staff that, um, you've had buy-in, basically, from, um, the staff, the parents, uh, the union. Uh, and I commend you and your staff for that heartily. Uh, and I would make a motion, uh, to support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Laraba, read her second. Seconded by Mr. Leary. Chair recognizes Mr. Conway.
Yes, thank you. Um, I also want to echo those words that, um, taking a look at the plan, uh, obviously, it's, uh, well thought out. Uh, I congratulate the superintendent and her staff in putting, um, a tremendous amount of thought and effort and work into this, uh, into this, uh, program and, into this plan. And I certainly would, um, would accept the, you know, accept the motion, uh, to accept this plan. Excellent job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milleniso?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, so the next step in this process, uh, then, is the state, uh, the Department of Elementary and Education will be, bring a team to Lowell after they review this particular plan. And, uh, the Deputy Commissioner, Carla Brooks-Bear, uh, will, uh, bring questions, uh, about this plan. And, uh, if, uh, Committee Member Larry, I believe is the rep, uh, for the committee, would join us at that meeting, um, as, as rep, um, so that we can get the feedback from the state and incorporate, um, their suggestions into our final plan. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item, under the superintendent's reports, the personnel report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Personnel report, October 6th, 2010, as reported.
Right. Motion by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms., uh, Ms. Martin, to accept the report as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Vote to vote. And the last report is a list of eligible teachers.
As reported, Your Honor, October 6th, 2010.
Moved to approve and placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Laraba. All those in favor?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Vote to vote. Thank you. Under new business, we have a letter from headmaster Rose Merrick on behalf of the distinguished alumni planning committee requesting a liquor license for the distinguished alumni awards program being held on Wednesday, November 3rd, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM in the Cyrus W. Irish Auditorium at Lowell High School. Is there any action that we need to, Ms. Lariva? Motion? Motion to, actually, motion to approve by Ms. Lariva, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Mr. Leahy?
I, you had a question about moving our meeting. Is, are we going to talk about that later, or is that part of this? Because it is on the same night as a school committee.
It is on the same night, yes. It is on a school committee night. So again, it's up to...
Don't we have to vote to not have the next, or what's today? So we can do that the next meeting, I guess?
Well, we could do it at the next meeting, but if you want us to suspend the rules, we can certainly take it up tonight if you'd like, since it is a...
We can do it the next meeting. I just kind of forgot about it.
We'll do it at the next meeting. Okay, fine.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, okay. That's right. It is under communication. The superintendent just informed me, so that will be brought up later on in the agenda. So on the liquor license, roll call.
This is for a liquor license, okay. Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next item is the disposal of, I'm sorry, the disposition of disposable surplus property. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Your Honor. School committee member, Mr. Leahy, did ask for us to put together a list of equipment that we are no longer in need of. Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operation Lang has put together the following report for the committee. And at this time, we would, we just asked Mr. Lang if there's anything else that he'd like to comment on, or does he need a vote of the committee?
Yes, you need a vote to declare the attached materials as surplus and approve the materials being advertised by the chief procurement officer for sale to the highest bidder. Ms. Larva? Ms. Larva makes that motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? Mr. Leahy?
No, just, at this time, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Le, Mr. Leary, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Curly for doing the work, so. And Mr. Leary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. We have three out-of-state travel requests this evening. Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Lariva, that we take them together. And you will note that no substitute teachers are needed, and there is no cost to the school department budget in any one of the three. So motion to approve, as presented by Ms. Lariva, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Uh, Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Leahy.
I, can I, I had a question related to the convention and conference request.
Okay. We'll get back up the bus. Go ahead, Mr. Leahy.
Well, it's not on these, per se, but I just wanted to know, there are some trips that we approved for future dates, and because we don't know what's going on with the clubs, how does that affect trips that we've already approved, but the club may or may not be in existence? Are all the clubs still at the high school, or are the cuts in effect, or?
Madam Superintendent?
Sure, through you.
Thank you, Your Honor. We are, we continue to work with the headmaster on the list of cuts that will be made to the clubs. I did speak with him recently, and he has met with all of the personnel who used to run the clubs, and he's in the process of finalizing the cuts. And unfortunately, because our budget is only $72,000 for clubs, the cuts will be deep and significant, so, and again, it's a very difficult cut to have to make. So to the extent that school trips are impacted, that'll be better known next week, but at this time, it's, we're not thinking that that would be the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lariva?
Just as a follow-up to that, the major trips that we have approved are actually scheduled through, we have tours, and those would not be canceled because the money has already been spent on them. And that's not really specifically through a club, that's a teacher who has volunteered to head that trip.
Okay, thank you. Next item under communication, we have a thank you note from the McCarthy family. It's addressed to Dr. Scott. On behalf of my family, I would like to thank you and the members of Lowell School Committee for observing a moment of silence in memory of our mother, Catherine McCarthy. Mom enjoyed the many years she spent working in the central office, sincerely, Mary Ann McCarthy. Accept the communication and place on file by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Lariva. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Vote to vote. Next communication is a letter from headmaster Rose Merrick regarding Lowell High School distinguished alumni induction ceremony. It's actually addressed to Dr. Scott and members of the school committee. In close, please find your invitation to the 2010 Lowell High School distinguished alumni induction ceremony scheduled for Wednesday, November 3rd. Three inductees will be traveling long distance, two are coming from California, one is coming from Virginia. The dates were chosen to accommodate their schedule. Unfortunately, this is an evening on which a school committee meeting has been scheduled. We apologize for any inconvenience this may cause you and the committee. Ms. Lariva?
I'm not sure what the will of the body is, but I don't know if we can either push back our meeting to 8:30 so that we could at least attend the program part of it, or if that's a meeting that we choose to cancel. I'm looking for some feedback from fellow members.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. I actually think that would be a great idea, if we were able to attend that first part, you know, during, when the actual awards are made, and really get to see that, which is really a wonderful event to be at. And then, you know, 8:00, 8:30, I know it's late, but if we could maybe take some time and make sure that it wasn't an overwhelming agenda, one that perhaps does not, you know, resemble tonight's agenda, we could maybe get through it in an hour and be done by, like, 9:00, 9:30. I think that would be a great way to accommodate both, if fellow members are down with that.
So does someone want to put that in the form of a motion? Is that in the form of a, yeah, is that the form of a motion? Okay. Sandra, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Lariva? Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Lariva, that the meeting actually will then be, I believe, a special, correct? A regular at 8:30? Regular at 8:30? Okay, stop. Yes, Mr. Doherty?
I think, Your Honor, through you to my colleagues, that is actually the opening event of the Mass Association for School Committees' annual conference, where I have typically gone as a representative of the school committee and voted as your delegate on resolutions. I guess I, I would like to state publicly, I would like to do that this year, even though I, it would mean missing a meeting and the alumni reception, only because in my role as chair of the urban division and my involvement in the advocacy subcommittee, the resolutions are a key part of what, and that happens Wednesday afternoon. So I would... I wouldn't be part of either of those events.
Okay.
So I'd like to know if...
Are you looking for a blessing?
Yes, if my colleagues are okay with me going as...
I'm making a wish to bless her.
Okay, yeah. June will put it in the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve the time change from 7:00 to 8:30. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Vote to vote. Thank you. Continuing with communications, Lowell Telecommunications, Channel 10, broadcast of school committee meetings live on the first and third Wednesday of the month. Thursdays at 6:00 PM, Saturdays and Sundays at 2:00 PM, and Tuesdays at 10:00 AM. Under professional personnel, members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby request to donate sick leave days to the following paraprofessional, Paula Ward at Shaughnessy School, 34 days. Motion to accept the communication by Ms. Lariva, seconded by Mr. Leary.
No, it has to be a roll call.
Oh, it has to be a roll call. Motion to approve the donation of the sick leave days by Ms. Lariva, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm just wondering if we need to do a motion to approve committee woman Doherty's attendance to, as a delegate to that event? And if so, I would make a motion to do such.
Right, we'll have to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Lariva, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor suspending the rules? Signify by saying aye. Vote to vote. Ms. Lariva moves to permit, if you will, authorize Mr. Doherty traveling to that meeting, seconded by Mr., I'm sorry, a delegate, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Usually we have an alternate in case you can't show up. You don't want an alternate.